Good evening, everyone. And we will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls 2022 City Council to order. I want to say thank you all for being here. And I think we all recognize it's the 150th anniversary of our community this year. But tonight, March 30th, 2022, is the actual 150th anniversary of the first city council meeting in the city of Fergus Falls. So that's pretty neat. And I'm glad you are all here with us tonight in person. For those watching, thanks for tuning in. Special thanks to Chris Shulkey and all of the staff at the Otter Tail County Historical Society for all the work they've done, not only in this event, but just the entire year. We've got a wonderful, wonderful historical society in our county. I just want to say thank you. And to city staff, there's a number of very special events planned for this year. The opportunity to celebrate 150 years comes once, and I think we're going to do it right this year. I'm glad that I'm able to be a part of it. So let's have fun this year. Let's look back, but let's also look forward. Let's celebrate our successes. Let's realize where we have room to improve and let's move, look to the future and let's go there together. So thanks for being here. Council, thank you for being here. First thing we're going to do is I'm going to read a proclamation that was prepared by Chris and his staff at the Historical Society. So whereas in 1856, James Fergus hired fellow Scotsman Joe Whitford to scout for potential town sites along the Red River, and whereas Whitford came across a section of rapids that he felt could be harnessed for the water power, and he stated a stake to claim naming the site Fergus Falls in honor of his employer. And whereas in 1870, George B. Wright purchased the town site for just over $100 with a vision of creating Fergus Falls as a regional trade center, and he built a dam on the river to power a sawmill. And whereas, on March 1st, 1872, Fergus Falls was chartered as an official village of the state of Minnesota and the county seat of Otter Tail County. And whereas since that time, the city of Fergus Falls has grown into a population exceeding 14,000 people and plans to commemorate the important milestone of reaching 150 years in the existence of existence with a year of celebration and special events. And whereas the city of Fergus Falls honors the hard work of its early citizens and volunteers who loved their community and made it a thriving place. And whereas the city of Fergus Falls marks their 150th anniversary by celebrating its citizens, volunteers, elected officials, and staff who strive to preserve and enhance the community of today. And whereas, I'm getting to the end, I promise. Whereas the city of Fergus Falls dedicates 2022 as a year of community-wide celebration to honor our past, celebrate our present, and embrace our future. Now therefore, I, Benjamin Shire, Mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim 2022 as a year of celebration of the 150th anniversary of the city of Fergus Falls, and I urge all citizens to join us in this celebration. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce the Director of the Otter Tail County Historical Society, Chris Shulkey.
Thank you, Mayor. So Fergus Falls' 150th anniversary is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to celebrate our community's history and heritage, and I cannot think of a better way to kick off this anniversary than by holding this meeting tonight on the exact date the first one was held, in 1872. Really, think about that. So for myself, the question is, how do we celebrate and talk about 150 years of history in less than an hour? Well, my thought is, we should just simply start from the beginning. So Fergus Falls is a river city. It was settled when transportation and industry were dependent on water power. As you mentioned in the proclamation, it was the river that attracted investors who recognized the rapids as a sign of future prosperity. So in 1856, little Falls businessman James Fergus hired fellow Scotsman Joe Whitford to scout for potential town site locations along the Red River. And acting upon advice from a group of Native Americans, Whitford came to the section of the river with the rapids that he felt could be harnessed for water power. He staked a claim, naming the site Fergus Falls in honor of his employer. It wasn't until 1859 that James Fergus finally visited the town site, and he was impressed enough to write a friend in Moline, Illinois urging him to come north so they could develop lumber and flour mills together. His friend, however, was not as enthusiastic. He warned James Fergus about, quote, "taking your little children into the wilderness where they must be deprived of civil society and endure the many disadvantages that you do not think of now." Unfortunately, James Fergus heeded his friend's advice as he decided against investing in the Fergus Falls site. He eventually moved to Montana where a county is named after him. Can you imagine having a city and a county named after you with Lewiston, Montana as the county seat? So Fergus County, Montana. The Civil War and Dakota conflicts stymied any further settlement throughout much early part of the 1860s. After the Civil War ended in 1865, of course, there was this great push west to settle uncounted acres of land. Land offices, including one in Otter Tail City, were set up while surveyors began the process of mapping out the land. One of these surveyors was Vermont native George B. Wright, who was a contracted government surveyor. And while he was surveying the abandoned Fergus Falls site, he also realized the potential of harnessing the rapids for water power. So George B. Wright and his partner, R.J. Mendenhall, purchased the town site, laying it out into lots and blocks. And in 1870, Wright broke ground for a sawmill about where Carlson Chiropractic is located now. He constructed a dam that is now a central dam, and he built a bridge across the river where Cascade Street Bridge is. And to entice people to move here, Wright advertised Fergus Falls as the coming city by installing its water power amidst the finest wheat-growing region in the Northwest.
And did you know that more than 1,000 people attended the July 16th, 1926 dedication of the George B. Wright statue on Union Avenue? Wright's son Vernon hired Harriet Hanley of Minneapolis to sculpt the statue using Robert Hannah as a model. Hannah was also on the park board and was largely responsible for planting trees along the city streets after the 1919 tornado.
That's correct, Brett. Thank you very much. Thank you for the information.
Okay, did you also know that Father Bill Gamber raised a bunch of money for the statue of Joe Whitford on Whitford Street by Zion Church? There's also a plaque about Joe Whitford being the town founder. You know, I kind of like these statues and they make things look nice. Mayor, what do you think? We get some more around town?
Thank you, Brett. Thank you. I think that's a good idea. I think we should add more public art. Indeed, Ian Dudley did a tremendous job on the Joe Whitford statue. And that's, but this is what makes our history so interesting. I mean, you have one man who claimed the site, Joe Whitford, and named it after another man who really had nothing to do with the site, natural development of the town. You know, that is why I consider-
Stop, stop, stop. I've had just about enough of this nonsense.
Now, excuse me, you are interrupting a very important historical milestone.
Oh, yes, so very important if you're a white man.
Oh, no. Hey, I'm the last person you should accuse of being a bigoted misogynist.
Really?
Yes, in fact, I think I am one of the more progressive men in town in that.
Really? Is that why you've only been talking about white men? Your founding fathers comment didn't sound very much like it was including the contributions of women.
Well, okay, okay, I get it. Boo. All right, I get it. Women contributed, yes, they contributed, right. But ma'am, you can't really compare keeping house and changing diapers to the work men were doing building this town.
Whoa, 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 wait. Chris, I thought you were better than that. Just because there aren't any statues of women around town doesn't mean they didn't play a big role in our history. Unfortunately, you leave me no choice. Mayor, I make a motion that we remove Chris Shulkey from this meeting. Brett, can you contact Kyle in case he doesn't agree? All in favor?
No, no, let's not be hasty.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
I'm trying to build consensus here, not tear it down. Just because Chris made an asinine, ignorant, stupid comment doesn't mean that we should, what's the word, cancel him? Yes. Let's give him a chance to explain. Chris, can you do that for us, please?
Um, yeah, I think it, let me give the history lesson here. I think it's time to learn and be reminded that human beings have lived in this area for thousands of years. The skeletal remains of a woman unearthed north of Pelican Rapids in 1932 are 8,000 to 10,000 years old. The people who lived here prior to white settlement came from numerous groups, including Cheyenne, Menominee, Dakota, and Anishinaabe. We may not know their names, but we know they have thriving cultures with defined roles. Women were responsible for building shelters, childrearing, cultivating, preparing and preserving food, and making clothing. The women who came to Otter Tail County in the great post-Civil War westward movement lived in sod houses or log cabins. They were not only responsible for the household, they also assisted their husbands and fathers with backbreaking work of clearing and settling this new land.
Women were also healers who nursed the sick and injured and delivered babies without any formal medical training. And when St. Luke's, the first hospital in Fergus Falls, opened in 1902, the superintendent was Sister Pauline Bratton. And let's not forget Carolyn Nygren, the first woman superintendent of schools for the entire county. Her job was to recruit and certify rural school teachers who, by the way, were primarily women. For a county the size of Otter Tail, that was quite a responsibility. And she was only 23 years old when she got the job in 1891.
Yeah, 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 we get it, we get it. Women were and are indispensable. But the fact remains that so was a man who owned the businesses and ran the city, which women just did not have any influence.
Holy crap, Anthony, careful. Do you really want to go down that rabbit hole?
All I'm saying is that there weren't avenues for women to exert their influence.
As much as it pains me, I partially agree with Councilman Hicks. Individually, women had little influence, but collectively, they could make a difference. Organizations such as the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Women's Club, and the Women's Christian Temperance Union all made significant and lasting changes in our community.
In fact, the local Daughters of the American Revolution chapter was especially active during World War I. In fact, as part of a nationwide effort to convince a wary public that entering the war was the right thing to do and to ensure loyalty against undue foreign influence, DAR members appeared before the city council to convince councilmen to change the name of Bismarck Avenue.
Mayor, Mayor, um, city council. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, my name is Maria Myget Brown. My husband, attorney James Brown, and I live in a quaint house we have built at 125 West Vernon.
Quaint? Your three-bedroom queen aunt-style house is one of the nicer homes in Fergus Falls. It was part of the Vernon Court section of town that people often referred to as Snob Hill. Hey, city council, rumor has it that the Browns had separate bedrooms, and while the third was called the Bishop's Room, it was used by the Episcopal bishop when he was in town.
Be silent. Mr. Brown and I didn't come all the way from New York in 1883 to live in Squalor. We come from cultural backgrounds. My father, Henry Myget, was an important attorney and jug judge. Among his many interests was being a trustee at Oxford Academy. Since Oxford accepted only male students, mother and father sent me to Miss Porter School in Farmington, Connecticut. Being one of the foremost private academies for young ladies, it has a number of distinguished alumni, including Nellie Grant, daughter of President Ulysses S. Grant. I have tried to bring proper values and etiquette to the frontier, including being a charter member of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And with the unchecked aggression and barbarism of the German Empire, it is our duty to save Europe and impart democratic values on the rest of the world. But first, we must stamp out foreign influence in our communities. After all, there are spies everywhere. Furthermore, it's people like you that we are trying to eradicate from the community. Shulkey, isn't it?
Yes.
With your common background, I will report you to the public safety commission. If I may continue, it is entirely inappropriate that a principal thoroughfare in this city have a German name. Prince Bismarck was the founder of the German Empire. He personifies the militarism and brute force we are striving to check. As a result, the Daughters of the American Revolution demand, excuse me, suggests that the street name be changed to something like Washington or Lafayette. Regardless, it would be prudent for you city council people to act on this matter in a positive way.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Brown and the DAR for making this request. I would like it in the official minutes that I did not have anything to do with naming the street Bismarck. That being said, I make a motion that we change the street name from Bismarck to Lafayette.
I second that motion, and I also want it on the record that Mrs. Brown is looking really good.
Sorry, sorry, ladies and gentlemen, city council. I'm afraid that motion has come and gone. The fact is that the council did take the DAR's suggestion to heart and on June 4th, 1918, officially changed the street name from Bismarck to Washington. That's very good. So thank you, Mrs. Brown. That was definitely an important milestone in our community.
I'm not finished yet. There is a business in town that does not quite fit our definition of loyalty. The fact is, we must rid Fergus Falls of all foreign thought and punish those who act in an un-American way. The Scandia State Bank-
Which, by the way, is still standing and now the home of Mark Jewelers.
Do you mind? We are engaged in an epic struggle to ensure the American way of life endures. The Scandia State Bank is an ill-favored name that suggests undue foreign influence. Therefore, the DAR demands, again, pardon me, suggests that the bank's board of directors change the name to reflect a more patriotic theme. As I said previously, it would be prudent for the bank to act positively in this manner.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Myget Brown, Mrs. Brown. Sure enough, sure enough, within a week of the DAR's suggestion, the Scandia State Bank changed its name to American State Bank, and if you go on one of my tours, you can still see the faint outlines of the American State Bank on that building. Sit your line, sorry.
I believe the outline of the letters, American State Bank, are still fairly visible. That's pretty interesting considering the bank-
I can hate myself.
That's interesting considering the bank went out of business in the early 1930s.
One of the influential organizations that Jean mentioned was the Fergus Falls Women's Club. One of their most prominent members was Phoebe Lyon Welch. Born and raised in Rhode Island, she came to Fergus Falls in 1892 when her husband George was named superintendent of the Fergus Falls State Hospital. Mrs. Welch was very active in working to improve patients' quality of life. In the late 1890s, she formed Mrs. Welch's Sewing Circle. This project utilized community volunteers for the first time as they would help women patients learn practical skills. It marked the start of the occupational therapy program. Through her efforts, Minnesota became the first state to adopt a system of regular, organized departments offering occupational therapy to patients. When Phoebe Welch died unexpectedly in 1918, the state Federation of Women's Clubs petitioned the state to construct and dedicate in her memory the hospital's industrial building, what later became known as the Memorial Building, built in 1922.
The Women's Club was also instrumental in the formation of the Otter Tail County Historical Society. At a Women's Club meeting in the fall of 1926, Marguerite Patterson suggested the possibility the club could be interested in sponsoring and aiding in the start of a museum in Otter Tail County for the purpose of preserving things of historical interest. So thanks to their efforts, an organizational meeting was held on July 31st, 1927 at Amore Park, and the Historical Society was established. So as we begin the commemoration of Fergus Falls-
(singing) Onward, Christian soldiers, marching as to war. Mayor, council, citizens of Fergus Falls, as representatives of the Women's Christian Temperance Union, we are disturbed by the weakening of community morals. This is the result of the evils of drink, which itself is the direct result of weak civic leadership. How is it possible that our mayor, supposed leader of our town, run a business that dispenses the devil's brew alongside his kids? It is shameful and must come to an end. That is why we are calling for an immediate community vote to eliminate the sale and consumption of all intoxicating beverages within city limits. The Temperance Union seeks to eradicate the beer and liquor business in Fergus Falls completely.
Are you out of your minds? Are you out of your minds? Do you realize how much money we would lose?
Don't you realize, Mr. Hicks, that strong manhood and pure womanhood have a mighty enemy in the open saloon? I owe protection to my fellow man, and that is only possible if we are on the right side of this great moral struggle. To think that our very own mayor, and I am speaking directly to you, Mayor Shire, profits off the sale of drink, it's outrageous and it must be stopped. That is why we are endorsing a candidate for mayor that will not back down from such evil.
Mrs. Adriana Lurfeld entered a plea of guilty in- That's for her, that's for her.
That was arguably worthy.
Mrs. Adriana Lurfeld entered a guilty plea in municipal court to charges of selling beer without a license. Mrs. Lurfeld has a small grocery store north of the fairgrounds, which is the football field now. According to the Journal, she stated that she could not make a living unless she sold beer. Mrs. Lurfeld claimed the complaints against her were from other beer dealers in town who were jealous and wanted to make trouble for her. She said that those who had been seen drunk around her store had gotten their fill uptown and had simply stopped at her store to try and buy more beer.
And that is why, ladies and gentlemen, I wish to announce my candidacy for mayor of Fergus Falls to clean up this mess and stop the evils of drink. Now, I sympathize with Mrs. Lurfeld. I know she's a widow and she's struggling to make ends meet, but I will not tolerate the illegal sale of beer. It has been happening far too often without strict enforcement and this will lead to moral decay. Mrs. Lurfeld has flaunted the law before. When the circus was in town, they raided her store and came away with 15 gallons and 200 quart bottles of beer. She was obviously expecting extra business from those carnival places.
Born and raised in Saint Olive Township, Philip Munson was a well-known attorney who was active in the Republican Party, American Legion, and Grace Methodist Church. In the 1930s, Munson became disturbed at the perceived weakening of community morals. Even though Fergus Falls was officially a dry city, it was the Depression and times were tough. There were more transients in town, along with beer parlors, gambling, and increased crime. Philip Munson did not like what Fergus Falls was becoming. Mr. Munson, at her court appearance, Mrs. Lurfeld claimed that she did not operate a low-down place. She said some of the town's most respected citizens were among her best customers. What do you say to that?
Well, if true, then those so-called leaders should pay the price. When I took office in 1938, my mission was to clean up this town, and not everyone agreed with my methods. Unlike others, I did not come to this office to make friends. I was determined to put Fergus Falls back on the straight and narrow.
While I appreciate your civic involvement, I disagree with your position. Only a fanatic would accuse people that take a drink now and then as homewreckers, poor Christians, or criminals. We're trying to get new business in Fergus Falls, not drive it away. Honestly, the ability to buy beer or cocktails helps our city grow.
As I was saying, much of the city's moral decay is a direct consequence of weak civic leadership. My plan, if followed by the letter, will make Fergus Falls great and sober again. There are far too many beer signs on Lincoln Avenue. They should be replaced with cafe instead. Second, I will limit the hours of beer sales and make sure that all beer parlor interiors be arranged so the plain views of the interiors can be seen from the streets. And third, there are no bootleggers in town. I serve notice on them right now to get out of town and to stay out. Hey! And they are allowed to go around until they are unable to get around. Hard liquor is illegal in Fergus Falls and its consumption is going to be stopped. The police will be instructed to arrest all those who are drunk. Finally, there are numerous machines in the city that are considered gambling devices. In three weeks, all pinball machines, games of chance, and other establishments will be removed or they will be seized and destroyed.
Wow, that is an ambitious plan. I think it should be discussed, but it also seems a little heavy-handed and it fringes on civil liberties.
Civil liberties, indeed. Your Honor, with all due respect, are you a socialist? This is the great moral struggle of the age. You are either with us or against us. There is no middle ground. And let me tell you something, Your Honor, before you accuse me of being heartless, know that I am not without compassion. In fact, I propose that every needy family in Fergus Falls should have their own cow.
Cow? I don't understand.
No, you wouldn't, would you? It's really quite practical. There's nothing more nourishing than dairy products. There, I propose that local businesses and professional men buy some cows and sell them to the needy on conditional sales contracts. It will even eliminate interest charges. If need be, several families could go together and share the cost and work of maintaining a cow.
That is a interesting proposition.
Remember this, through hard work and good moral character, anyone can succeed. Well, there's a lot of work to be done. Don't forget, my name is- Don't forget, my name is Philip Munson. I'm running for mayor to clean up Fergus Falls. Good evening. Philip Munson's two terms as mayor and 15 years as city attorney had a lasting impact on the community. While a few places continued to sell beer, Fergus Falls remained a dry city.
Well, I personally am not a drinker, but my grandfather used to tell me, oh, but the ability to sell liquor in town benefits the community in so many ways. My grandfather used to tell me that Fergus was the largest city in the state to remain dry. Everyone went to Foxholm, which had an elegant booze dispensary largely supported by the people of Fergus Falls.
The liquor question was perhaps the most divisive issue ever faced by the community of Fergus Falls. After several failed attempts, voters finally approved the establishment of a municipal liquor store in the spring of 1959. So, what can we take away, Mayor and City Council, from the long-term fight over liquor in our community? It shows, to me, it shows that we may fight, argue, and complain, but all parties felt that they had the best interests of Fergus Falls in mind. That's how communities grow and mature. Not everyone is going to agree on things, but for the past 150 years, we have learned that Fergus Falls does not have just one voice, it has many voices. And so, we work on our differences and try to come to consensus for a better community. Thank you, Mayor Shire and City Council, for being team players and playing along, playing along as we commemorate our community's 150th anniversary. Thank you, Bennett, thank you very much. So, folks, as we work on the 150th anniversary, we have come up with designs, well, we haven't, but some nice coins, a silver and copper coins, and we had a little drawing. I want to thank our sponsors for that, and we had hundreds of drawings, so, or people who entered their names. And so, there are several coppers, the copper coins, that I'm going to read off their names. They will get these commemorative 150th anniversary coins. It says, "City of Fergus Falls, 150th, 1872 to 1972," and on the back, it says, "The coming city of the Northwest." So, the first winner is Gary Anderson. Better known as Stretch. Chris Erickson is our next winner. Did you stick around? Yes. Here's the, here's from 1972, the actual centennial coin. Is Terry Aho here tonight?
No.
No? Okay, Terry's not here. Gary Van Tassel?
I'm here to pick it up for him. I am.
Uh, Jay Johnson? Amanda, are you here? Is Amanda in? Amanda is not here. Amy Copperode?
I can pick that one up, Chris.
Maybe you should just stay, you guys, there's a couple more, right? Stephanie Carlson?
Yep, that one's.
And who else?
Jana.
Oh, just, well, that's the other, okay. Arnold Leifson? Is Arnold here?
Oh.
Well, there you go. Very nice. And then, so, we have the grand prize for the silver coin, and that is Jana Art. And standing in for Jana once again is Councilman Anthony Hicks.
Stuff in the ballot box?
Man, you really get around.
Huh? There's probably a few more in there.
You didn't get enough, he wants more.
Yeah.
They go on sale May 2nd.
Hey, those are on eBay.
Create stocking service for next year.
Just to let you know that these coins, we will have the silver and copper Osborne Coinage, they're very nice, they will be available starting May 1st, May 2nd, that is. And to let you know, proceeds do benefit the Otter Tail County Historical Society.
Thank you for the.
And so, as we celebrate our 150th anniversary, I want to make sure you go to our, we have a dedicated website.
Fergusfals150.com.
Questions or comments from the audience, otherwise.
Display.
What's that?
Your display.
Oh, yes, thank you, yeah, and so, uh, we have a new display at the Historical Society. Are you getting this?
Marketing here.
Fergus Falls through the years, and, you know, we keep adding a few things to it, but it's a really fine display, and it includes over 150 artifacts. There's also a slide presentation from Lillian and Jean Wedding. I don't know if any of you remember the Weddings. They did a presentation called "Changing Faces of Fergus Falls," that's been put onto the DVD, it's fascinating. And that's accompanied by 1977 version of Fergus Falls, "This is Our Home," that was a promotional piece from First National Bank. It's a catchy little biddy, and also a note, it's from 1972. Maybe, I'm, you should hear that, maybe you can incorporate that into your greater Fergus Falls promotion.
And Chris, speaking of commemorative items, Blaze Buset has also created some commemorative tiles.
Yes, Blaze Buset from the British Shop has done a series of four commemorative tiles, which would be beautiful. And so, he's doing that through his business, but, and there's only a limited run of those.
Hundred?
Hundred, is that it?
That makes sense.
So, make sure that you get those, they are really.
He's taking a, like, making a list.
Councilman Hicks, did you want to?
You should just thank R.C. Drew for the work that he put in on the coins.
Yes, R.C. Ryan, R.C. Drew's did a wonderful job soliciting donations and working on the coin project, because it was suggested at one of our first meetings, and I said, yeah, if someone wants to do this, fine. And he did, so, here we go. So, he couldn't be here tonight, he's a bit under the weather, and we didn't want him spreading germs. All right. Party at the.
Are we a jerk?
Yeah, so, thank you very much. See, they never say anything.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, everyone. We're done.